I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. At this time, we will move into closed session to discuss one personnel matter pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you, President Viascas. The members of the board are now going into closed session. And public session will resume approximately six thirty P M. And the board will return at that time. Good evening and welcome everybody to the San Juan Unified School District's Board of Education meeting for May twenty sixth. I will turn it over to President Viascas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Quick mic chat. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. Due to the executive orders issued by Governor Newsom due to the COVID nineteen outbreak, tonight's meeting is being conducted via the Zoom platform. The meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district's website. We thank you for joining us and ask your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during the time of physical distancing and other restrictions. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. I am Paula Viascas, Board President. Joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, and Ms. Pam Costa and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comment for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the comment form located on the district website at W W W dot San Juan dot E D U slash May twenty sixth. If you wish to submit a public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by six P M. Today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after six P M. Tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that the agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the raise your hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute time limit or approximately fifteen hundred characters. With that, we are at item D, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for May twelve?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. McKibben and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. That was unanimous. We are at item E one, staff reports. Superintendent Kern.
Thank you, President Viascas. I'm going to give just a little short report kind of just about looking ahead to the fall and then snapshot about budget, but those items really are going to come back in two weeks. And then Ms. Similak is going to do a short staff report as well. There have been a number of questions out there about what is currently happening. What are the discussions like for what could the fall look like? And I just wanted to share with folks that we have actually been working on this as a district for a number of weeks now. Hopefully, the parents that are here that are observing this meeting will have gotten the link to the parent survey as well. We sent that out. I believe that went out last Wednesday. We're trying to gather data from our parents because that information can really help us when we're looking towards the fall as well. We so we have a number of teams looking at really what what are the impacts for early childhood, elementary, and then secondary schools? And we're meeting with some of our labor partners and having those discussions as well. Additionally, I know the County Office of Education has a committee that Dave Gordon has put together. We have two representatives on that committee. Deputy Superintendent Bassinelli from the instructional side of the House and then Assistant Superintendent Paula Rappalo are of H R. And so they're both on that committee providing guidance as well. So in two weeks on the June ninth board meeting, we've got kind of just a generic item that says COVID nineteen update, but there's going to be a lot in that because really that's what when the governor kind of put pause on the L cap process for the year. Part of that is we have to report out to the the community and the board what we're doing around a number of items, including distance learning. And then at that same time, we're going to start, we're going to share with the board and the community the work that we're starting on as we look to the fall. One of the things that I want to point out, this Friday will be two months and two weeks since we've closed down. And a lot has changed in those two months and two weeks. We have, we will have about two, two months and two weeks until the start of school as well towards the end of this week. So you think about what additionally could change over that time? So I think what we've really learned during the last two months is we need to be flexible. We need to be working together. We need to be responsive based on what happens. So that's even our, our thinking is going. We're trying to plan, but we need to be flexible as well. So I just wanted to update the board and the community on that. Additionally, a lot has come out in the, in the papers and in the media about the budget. And at the next meeting in two weeks, Deputy Superintendent Kent Stevens will be providing the budget update. And really, what are the impacts for us as a diff, as a district next year and into the following year? It is very significant. And we are continuing to get more and more information as we go along. I'm going to have an opportunity with another superintendent this Thursday to be in a meeting with assembler member McCarty as he wants to ask some questions about what are the impacts on that? So we're, we're still trying to influence what ultimately that that may revise might be by the time the legislature gets their hands on it and then the governor ultimately signs it. So I just wanted to provide that information for you. And then at this time, I'm going to have Linda Similak jump in and give a quick staff update.
And thank you, Mr. Kern. Good evening, President Velasquez and board members. I would like to take this opportunity to update the board considering concerning the district's transition by trustee area elections. As you recall, at the April twenty eighth board meeting, the board adopted resolution number twenty nine ninety one to temporarily pause the hearings related to the transition process due to COVID nineteen and also following the recommendations of Governor Newsom, his executive order N forty eight dash twenty made on April ninth, twenty twenty. In that order, the safe harbor timelines remain told, quote, until such time as neither state or local public health officials recommend or impose social distancing measures in relevant subdivision, close quote. Based on the most recent information received from the Sacramento County Health Officer, as of May twenty second, that order is still in effect. In the meantime, the district's request for a waiver from holding elections to transition to buy trustee area elections was heard by the California Department of Education at their May seventh meeting. On May twenty first, twenty twenty, the district received formal notice that the waiver request was approved and is effective from March tenth, twenty twenty up to March eighth, twenty twenty two. Once the district resumes the transition process, it will have eighty days to complete, including holding the pre map public hearing, drafting proposed maps and holding public hearings on those draft maps, obtaining public input on the draft maps and having the Sacramento County Office of Education hold the county committee meeting to approve or disapprove the proposed maps. As more information becomes available, I will provide additional information to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kern and Ms. Similak. I do have one question for you, Mr. Kern, and that was that I was excited to see this parent surveys going out. Is it safe to assume that that information will be available for the agenda item for our next board meeting for discussion?
Yeah, we should have some, some data back already on that. And, and that should be helpful really hearing from the parents.
Do any of my colleagues have questions on the staff report? Okay. With that, we are now at items E two through E four. Mr. Allen, do we have any reports from board appointed district committees, employee committees or organizations or other district organizations?
President Viascas, we do have two employee groups that would like to make comment tonight. The first is Karen Smith with C S E A. And Karen, you should be unmuted now.
Okay. President Velasquez, members of the board, Mr. Kern and Ms. Cunningham. C S E A wanted to share with you something we decided to do for our members seniors this year. We normally give out to Barbara Rayo Memorial five hundred dollar scholarships to our classified members seniors. And this year we decided to do something extra special. So we voted at our chapter meeting that anyone that was a senior of one of our members who applied, we would give a scholarship to. And so this year we just voted it approved to give out thirteen five hundred dollar scholarships to our seniors. So I just thought that was pretty awesome and wanted to share it with board. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. There was a lot of quiet head nods and thumbs up. Thank you very much for that wonderful update. Mr. Allen, are there any further employee organization updates or district organization?
We also have Bill Simmons with S J T A. And Mr. Simmons, your microphone should be should be unmuted. One moment.
This year, we just voted it approved to give out thirteen five hundred dollar scholarships to our seniors. So I just wanted to share it with board. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. There's a lot of
Sounds like Mr. Simmons might be listening to the streaming via live YouTube, which is a little bit delayed there. Let me try one more time here.
We also have Bill Simmons with S J T A.
Mr. Simmons, are you there, sir?
And Mr. Simmons, your microphone should be
Yes, um, members of the
unmuted. One moment.
This year, we just voted it approved to give out thirteen five hundred dollars scholarships to our seniors. So I just
If you have any other windows open.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Do you have any other windows open?
Sounds like Mr. Simmons might be listening to the streaming via live YouTube, which is a little bit delayed there. Let me try one more time here. We also have Bill Simmons with S J T A. Mr. Simmons, are you there, sir? And Mr. Simmons, your microphone should be
I'm, yes, I'm here.
Members of the
Five hundred dollars scholarships to our seniors.
Mr. Simmons, it seems that we have some feedback. We can now, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Allen, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
I
President Viascas, I'm going to suggest that we come back to Mr. Simmons and we'll try and make contact and see if we can smooth that out and perhaps come back a little bit later in the agenda if that's okay with the board.
That sounds like a plan and thank you, everybody, for your patience as we continue to iron out our technological glitches. With that, we are at item E five and there are no closed session actions to report. So with that, we are at item F, visitor comment. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
Certainly, President Viascas, I'd be happy to. Attendees, this is the portion of the meeting that is for public comment on an item that is not appearing on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to offer thoughts about an item that is on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you hold your comment until that agenda item is called. If you'd like to make a comment on a topic that is not on the agenda, we would ask that you raise your hand at this time. The raise hand button can be found in different locations depending on how you have joined the meeting tonight. If you are on a mobile device, it is the little raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen typically. If you are on a desktop device, it is the raise hand button found at the bottom of the participant screen. And if you've called in today, you can press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand. And we'll give a few moments for anybody who would like to offer a comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And as we wait for folks to indicate their desire to participate, I will just run over some of our key reminders. I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we're not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up. Mr. Allen, do we have any general visitor comment?
It does not appear that we have anybody raising their hand in attendance with us. However, we do have several that have been submitted to us via the web form for a general public comment.
Okay, if you don't mind running through the ones on the web form, that would be great.
Absolutely. One moment. Our first is from Sarah Metal. Dear Honorable S J U S D Board Members and Superintendent Kern, I'm writing to voice my support for the board's decision to move to by district elections and for your decision to pause the public hearing process to implement the transition until the state of California lifts the COVID nineteen stay at home order. By district elections are long overdue and I'm thankful for the board's unanimous vote to move forward with this transition. Sadly, COVID nineteen has made it difficult to reach and engage stakeholders for a variety of reasons and moving forward with minimal public participation is not acceptable. I urge you to maintain your position to move forward with the transition when the order is lifted so that your constituents can participate in this incredibly important process. Thank you. Our next comment is from Alicia Crum. San Juan Unified School District Board Members. I'm a parent in the district and have been active in this community for several years, including serving as on a board appointed advisory committee. I write today to express appreciation for delaying the process of moving from at large districts to by district elections until a time when people can safely convene. I myself am severely immunocompromised and not able to leave the house save for medical appointments. Gathering input on such a big change is important and parents like me should have the opportunity to participate in a meaningful way. However, at this time, I am following physical distancing guidelines remaining at home as much as possible to ensure the safety and the safety of my family and others. Thank you for not making me choose between having my voice heard and putting my health at risk. Please continue to maintain your commitment to public health and safety and wait to gather crucial input until it is safe for community members like myself to participate. Our next comment is from Chris Briano. San Juan Unified School District Board Members. I write today. I apologize. It looks like this was submitted on behalf of Dr. Richard Pan by Chris. So San Juan Unified School District Board Members. I write today in support of your decision to delay your process of moving from at large districts to by district elections until a time when people can safely convene. Moving to by district elections is a process that should be done thoughtfully and with full community input. We are still in the midst of a public health emergency that does not allow individuals to safely gather. As a physician and a public health expert, I hope you will maintain your commitment to public health and safety and wait to gather crucial input until it is safe for community members to meaningfully participate. Sincerely, Dr. Richard Pan, Senator, Sixth Senate District. And our final comment that has been submitted is from Natasha Vidic. I'm a parent of a junior at Miraloma. I've been watching my daughter struggle with the current content delivery mode, although she has resources and parental support. Before the district started distance learning, she had very good grades. However, she is struggling now and in danger of not passing some of her classes. Other parents report similar challenges. Now let's think about students who don't have the resources or parental support. Students who may be facing their parents' unemployment and may be threatened by loss of housing. Students whose parents perform essential work. Students who may be living with relatives because their parents are in the front lines of battling the virus. Students or their families who may have COVID. Schoolwork may be the last of their concerns. In short, regardless of the district rhetoric, that student grades will not be affected. They're falling precipitously for students who can't perform in these circumstances. Many are facing loss of credit. Students have found themselves in very difficult situations and they are coping the best they can. I'm asking the district to talk to the counselors, examine the situation and revisit their current grading policy. For example, some districts have adopted policies that don't allow grades to decrease past their third quarter. Only increase or cumulative loss of credit may become a serious issue for both students and the district itself. Thank you for your attention to this matter. And that is all the comments we have received at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I do not currently see any other participants indicating a desire to give public comment. I'll ask you to confirm that, Mr. Allen, before we move on.
I concur. There are no hands raised at this time.
Great. Thank you. With that, we are at item G, the consent calendar. Do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar, Mr. Allen?
We do not.
Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? If you do wish to remove any, please indicate so verbally. I cannot see everybody's window right now. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve items G one through G six?
So moved. I'll second.
It has been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please say aye. That was unanimous. With that, we are at item one, I one instructional materials adoption. Ms. Schnep, please begin when you are ready.
Good evening, Superintendent Kern, President Viascas, members of the board and Ms. Cunningham. With me presenting tonight are Laura Davis, Program Specialist for Special Education, Nicole Kukral, Program Specialist for English Language Arts and Social Studies, and Nicole Nate, Program Specialist for World Languages and Instructional Technology. Nicole Nate should be putting the PowerPoint up right now as I was stalling. Thank you, Nicole. As San Juan continues to support practitioners with the implementation of state standards and our new graduation requirements, it's important that teachers and students have access to current aligned instructional materials. Can we move to the next slide, Nicole? Unfortunately, due to the physical impact of the COVID pandemic, we have pushed pause on all adoptions other than the ones that we are presenting tonight. You can see the complete list in attachment C of our adoption matrix. At this time, it's important to be cautious and conservative, not overwhelm our system. The selected courses that we are bringing forward to you are necessary in order to meet the guidelines of the William Act. William's Act. Can move to the next slide. Small adoptions typically use a one cycle adoption process. And these adoptions don't involve as many practitioners and instructional materials tend to be limited. The two cycle process is used for larger adoptions and we have larger committees and they use key criteria to vet materials and then narrow the pilot to two sets of materials typically. Tonight, you'll be seeing reports for the English Language Arts Intensive Reading Intervention Program and our World Languages pilot for American Sign Language and the Advanced Placement Spanish Literature and Culture courses. Next slide, please. We're going to start with Nicole Nate, who is our Program Specialist for World Language, and she's going to talk to us about the American Sign Language and the A P Spanish Literature and Culture pilot at this time.
Thank you, Kristin. I am happy to be here tonight to share the process for the adoption of the instructional materials for American Sign Language, one through three, and A P Spanish Literature and Culture. Sorry. I will briefly explain the specific materials review process for these two programs. We requested samples of the available materials from publishers in August of twenty nineteen. Teachers reviewed the programs over the course of the fall semester. As Kristin mentioned earlier, small programs do not typically engage in a two cycle adoption process. But as small programs, they have the benefit of a well-connected collaborative group of teachers to engage in a review. For American Sign Language, the review team consisted of both American Sign Language teachers in the district. For A P Spanish Literature and Culture, the review and selection was conducted collaboratively by a group of teachers from four of our high schools. El Camino, which has the course on the schedule for next year, along with Bella Vista, Rio Americano and Encina High Schools, all of which hope to offer the course in the future. You can find the specifics of all of the recommended materials in your attachment for report two. The materials were made available to the community for review and input from December twenty nineteen through February of twenty twenty. As a result of their thorough and thoughtful review, the teachers were able to recommend the materials we are presenting tonight. Both programs meet our key indicators for selection of instructional materials, which I will share on the next slide. As with all instructional materials, the review committee members used our key indicators as a lens for evaluating the available instructional materials for American Sign Language and Advanced Placement Spanish Literature and Culture. These key indicators are alignment to standards. In this case, the review committee members ensured that the content of the materials aligns with the California twenty nineteen World Languages standards. Evaluating the quality and ease of use in the way the materials are organized. They examined the assessments provided by the materials and ensured that the materials provide universal access, meaning that the reviewers examined the features of the instructional materials to ensure that the materials provide support for all learners, including those with special needs, to use the materials. In addition, reviewers look for supports in the teacher resources that will help them design learning experiences using the materials in which all learners engage in rigorous academic content. This leads right into the next key indicator, instructional planning and teacher support provided in the materials. And finally, the last key indicator that the committee considers in its review and recommendation is the availability and quality of technology and digital tools. Before moving on, I would like to highlight in particular the findings of the Advanced Placement Spanish Literature and Culture Committee with regard to both the program organization and technology for the materials they are recommending. The committee specifically noted the fact that the recommended materials include every reading and support materials for each reading on the required reading list for the A P Spanish Literature and Culture exam, as well as a robust website where teachers can provide content and supplemental resources and practice opportunities. With those key indicators in mind, the teachers participating in the reviews carefully examined each of the instructional materials being considered and have chosen the materials being brought to you for your consideration this evening. For American Sign Language, the total cost of the adoption for seven years is three thousand two hundred and ninety three dollars. For Advanced Placement Spanish Literature and Culture, the total cost is four thousand five, four hundred and fifty one dollars also for seven years, bringing the total materials cost to seven thousand seven hundred bringing the total materials cost to $7,744. Professional development is embedded in the costs listed for these programs. Because these programs are so small, our teachers will work directly with the publishers to receive support needed in order to successfully implement these instructional materials. I will welcome your questions later. But now, I would like to turn it over to Laura Davis, who, along with Nicole Kukral, will share the process for the two-cycle adoption for intensive reading intervention, including the innovative interdepartmental collaboration of both the facilitators for the adoption as well as the review committee.
We'd like to start with a discussion about why our district needs an intensive intervention for reading. Next slide. You have seen Scarborough's rope previously, and we are showing it again as it really is the foundation of our work. As shown in this graphic, we know that there are many discrete skills that people possess who are fluent and skilled readers. The language comprehension skills of understanding the structure of our language along with vocabulary and background knowledge contribute to the development of skilled reading. But without word recognition skills, students will not develop into skilled readers. Next slide. In our district, we have many students that face significant challenges in developing the necessary skills to learn to read. Many students struggle to learn the skills of phonological awareness, decoding and sight recognition, and are students who did not develop these skills when introduced in first and second grade. Then by third and fourth grade, they are reading two or more grade levels below. And while exposed to grade level text, are not fluent readers and unable to independently access texts at their grade level. This difficulty is not just experienced by students with disabilities. So this presents the need to work collaboratively with general education to determine how best to address this problem. We need to provide direct and systematic instruction using a core replacement in order to develop the necessary skills in order for these students to access and benefit from ELA instruction in a general education setting. An intensive reading intervention is designed based on extensive research to intensify instruction in these word recognition skills while providing the language comprehension skills closer to their developmental level. The purpose is to strengthen reading skills so these students can return to general education for grade level instruction in the future. Nicole will now take us through the process that we use to determine the appropriate curriculum to provide this instruction.
Thank you, Laura. In the fall, we shared Report 1 with our Curriculum and Standards Committee, which indicated the two programs that were being piloted in our school district. The committee decided to pilot Read 180, which was a program that was already in use for many years in our school district. And they also chose to try a new set of materials called Language Live, published by Voyager Sopra. Nicole, next slide. As part of our adoption timeline, one of our defining characteristics that Nicole and Laura both mentioned is that this was truly a collaborative effort between special education and general education staff, both with the cofacilitation of Laura and me in this process and also the members of our committee that represented a wide range of teachers from both the General Ed and Special Education Department. We did a lot of preliminary work to set a strong foundation for our adoption, including gathering initial community input on the materials under consideration and also providing professional learning for our committee. The purpose of that professional learning was to ensure that our committee members all had a common language and shared understanding about how students learn to read. So that way, when they were able to evaluate materials, they really looked at the materials through the lens of how well those materials would support those students as emerging readers. Next slide, Nicole. We then highlighted materials after our teachers had an opportunity to listen to publishers and dive into the materials a little bit more. And that happened in two six-week cycles during the school year. Based on the community input that we received and also teacher experiences, our committee landed on a recommendation of Language Live. Next slide. As they evaluated the materials and came to their recommendation, they used the different criteria which Nicole shared with you earlier. However, to ensure that this adoption process really met the specific needs of these particular intervention materials, we added some extra details to these criteria. Specifically, in criteria 1 and 2, we wanted to ensure that the materials demonstrated systematic explicit instruction in the foundational skills so that students would learn how to decode words in addition to making meaning from the text that they were accessing. Additionally, we had a very keen eye on the assessment component. We wanted to ensure that the materials included robust diagnostic assessments to ensure that students would be properly placed in each of the programs. And also, we wanted to ensure that there was very granular progress monitoring tools to ensure that we were able to keep an eye on students' growth as they progress through some very discrete skills that they truly needed to learn. Next slide, Nicole. When we finally arrived in our decision-making process, it was truly an opportunity for collaborative conversation between our committee members and their experiences piloting. We had a wide range of participants, including administrators, our teachers that piloted in different settings, and also a parent. And it was really valuable to hear all of the different experiences that those professionals and those community members brought to the table, especially the parent who shared what he was able to observe his daughter engaging in at home when she was working on the materials kind of on her own outside of the school. There was incredible excitement. Oh, Nicole, can you go back one second? Sorry. There was incredible excitement and energy in that conversation. And it did lead to a unanimous recommendation of Language Live, which we're bringing to you this evening. Okay, go ahead, Nicole. When we really thought about why teachers selected Language Live, there were a few themes that resonated with us significantly. Number one, our students were engaged. Our teachers were so impressed with the excitement that our students brought to the materials and interacting with them. Secondly, and most importantly, one thing that they noticed is that in a six-week pilot of Language Live, students actually made tangible growth, which was something that is very unusual for a pilot. And of course, this is so important, knowing that the purpose of this adoption is to ensure reentry of our students into the general education setting. Okay, go ahead, next slide. We also collected a lot of student feedback as we engaged in these pilot cycles. And there were two areas that our students really shared some information with us on that we wanted to share with you. Number one, our students generally reported that they felt like more confident readers. And number two, our students also shared that they had experienced more success in Language Live. This is a group of students that has oftentimes felt disenfranchised by school. This is a group of students who have potentially experienced multiple years of challenge and struggle. And so for these students to come to us and say that they were feeling more confident as readers and that they were feeling more successful in a six-week pilot was something that was very profound to our committee and something that we wanted to honor. And of course, that definitely impacted their decision for this recommendation. Next slide. The materials costs include two components. Number one, we are purchasing seven-year licensing, so this is consumable workbooks and also the digital licenses that we need for the program. Additionally, this set of materials has a really robust technological component and is not effective without being able to use that component on a daily basis. And therefore, as is consistent with some of our other digital adoptions, we are also purchasing Chromebooks. And those will be funded out of the Title IV funding and so that we can support the adoption and our teachers are able to use it on a daily basis. Go ahead, Nicole. In terms of our professional learning model, we know that right now, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, times are uncertain. So we don't yet know what our specific model will look like. We do, however, know that it will need to include three different components. Number one, it needs to include the professional learning in the teaching of reading. Again, so that all teachers using these materials have a shared understanding of what it looks like when students learn to read so that they can support the use of the materials in an effective way. We also, of course, know that our publisher is going to play a central role as the publisher will actually teach our teachers how to use the materials. And finally, we know that just experiencing a couple of days of professional learning at the beginning of a school year is not conducive to successful implementation. So we will continue to support the adoption and professional learning throughout the school year by offering continuous opportunities for our teachers to learn together and to collaborate. We're going to have to be flexible so that we can respond to teachers' needs and pivot as necessary. Next slide, Nicole. At this time, President Viasquez, we are open to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
If there are members of the public in attendance today who would like to comment on this item, now would be the time to do so. We would invite you to raise your hand. Again, you can do that by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen if you're on a mobile device. If you are on a desktop device, that Raise Hand button is located at the bottom of the Participants' window. And if you are on a phone calling in, you can press *9 to raise your hand. And it does look like we have one attendee who has had their hand raised throughout this presentation. So that would be our one comment at this point, President Viasquez.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hear from that visitor comment at this time. See Riley's mom.
Riley's mom, if you'd like to give a comment, you should be able to unmute your microphone at this time.
Please begin when you're ready. Okay, I think that might have been an error. The participant's hand is no longer raised.
All right.
So with that, we will turn to board member questions and comments. I will turn it to my colleagues and we'll begin with Mr. Hernandez.
No, no real comment. I just want to, I just, I think I heard on the Curriculum and Standards meeting that happened on May 20. Did you say that was unanimous support? Is that what you said?
Correct, it was.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
I just want to compliment you for the joint effort between special education and regular education to find a program that meets so many students' needs. It might be interesting to the public to hear how many schools, you answered this question in Curriculum and Standards. Approximately how many schools will be utilizing the intensive reading intervention programs?
So we have 25 classrooms that will be utilizing a program, 612 students and 30 teachers.
That's fantastic. I can't wait to hear updates throughout the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason?
Really excited about this adoption. Just a couple of questions. Could you repeat why we're moving forward with this adoption but pausing on others?
So under the Williams Act, we have to have materials for students. And the AP Spanish class and the ASL, those are new courses that we adopted last year. So we needed to purchase materials for that. And that's why those courses, that's why the cost is so low because these are rollout courses that will probably grow with interest as we move along. With the Language Live adoption, we were using Read 180. That license has run out. So we were either going to have to repurchase the Read 180 or look at new materials. The committee felt like we needed to review the most current materials before we decided on some material.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then my last question is, you know, as I was reviewing the materials, I believe it's on page 11 of this section, I caught a line that said materials, a date for, a target date for materials to be in the classroom. And it made me take pause. I heard you say during the presentation that folks that are taking this will have a Chromebook. I guess my question is, is the developer going to provide or thinking about providing options to curriculum in case we're not on site in the future?
Yes, we do have a plan for that. And I don't know if Nicole or Laura wants to share details.
I can. And then Laura, feel free to jump in as well. The materials are accessible digitally. And so we do, we do know that our teachers and our students will be able, will be able to access them digitally. So I'm, Ms. Creason, I'm not sure if that's, if that's what you're asking.
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
I am unmuted, right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I had a couple of questions in terms of words that, for my own edification and so forth. On page 5, slide number 10, can you explain a little bit more about what core replacement means?
Laura Davis, do you want to answer that one?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So the state actually allows a curriculum to be used as core replacement for students who are reading two or more grade levels below. And so it serves as the ELA curriculum and it meets the Williams requirement for that.
Okay, good. And my second one is on page 12, related to the intensive reading intervention. It talks about there are gamified features. What are gamified features?
I can talk about that a little bit. And Laura, again, feel free to jump in. But in Language Live, students can do things like create a little avatar. It's a, it's an online persona. They earn badges, they earn awards as they progress through the particular level. So it's really motivating for students, especially, especially our students in that upper elementary to middle school range who are just really engaged by that.
My next question relates to the ASL program. You said that is currently available in two high schools and two other high schools are anticipating. How many, do we have anybody that has gone through all three years of it in any of our schools?
Nicole Nadez?
Yes, actually, if I may, just if I may clarify, at this time, it is offered at two high schools. We have not yet heard of additional high schools gearing up to offer it. For AP Spanish Literature, we have it on the books for one high school next year and other high schools that hope to offer it in the future. Next year will be the first year where students will be taking the Year 3 course in American Sign Language.
Okay, so next year. And congratulations on the 18 to 0 vote, particularly when the other choice was a program that had been, been used for some time and so forth. That's, that's very impressive. Thank you very much. This is a really good adaptation. And I know a lot, a lot of the people have talked about how much they want ASL in the schools. I hope we can get it so that it's more broadly used.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. I have one question, and that is on the intensive reading intervention piece. I just noted in some of the supplementary documents that are included in our board packet, there's a discussion there of limitations. And there's just one that I didn't quite understand and was hoping folks could expand on. And there's just one that I didn't quite understand and was hoping folks could expand on. And that's the piece around there being only four digital entry points into the online curriculum. I don't have a appropriate reference point to fully understand the context there. But if someone could offer some, offer a little more information there and then how we are mitigating it, that'd be great.
Laura, do you want to take that one or do you want me to take it?
Go ahead Nicole.
Okay, so when we purchased Language Live, Language Live is delivered in two different levels. There's a beginning level and a little bit more advanced level. The technology piece of Language Live is a computer adaptive program that takes students through a variety of foundational skills. So when a student takes a diagnostic assessment, it places them at an appropriate place where they need the foundational skills that the program is going to be teaching. And there's only four points where students can begin. So it's either it's a beginning of level one, the middle of level one, the beginning of level two, or the middle of level two. And, you know, and sometimes that's not completely precise because it might be that a student needs something, needs to learn, needs to learn a skill that's kind of right before the beginning of level one. So in order to learn that skill, it means that they might have to repeat some things that they already know how to do. And that was something that just teachers didn't love. But of course, there were so many other pieces of this program that they did love, that it was something that they were willing to overlook. Does that help you, President Viasquez?
That does. Thank you very much for that, for the explanation. That was it for me. Thank you all very much for all the work that goes into this. Just the amount of eyes alone that, that looks at it and all the coordination that that takes. I know it's a huge lift, so thank you all for, for your work on this. I don't see any other questions from, or comments from board members. So with that, this item is scheduled for action on June 9. Is it the will of the board to have this item return on consent?
Yes.
Okay, hearing no objections, it will return on consent. We are now at item I2, partnering with the San Juan Education Foundation. Mr. Kern.
Thank you President Viasquez and members of the board. Tonight I kind of wanted to just have a discussion with you and share some information related to discussions that I've been having with the foundation and then we've had in cabinet as well. So we have the good fortunate, or the good fortune, I'm sorry, of having one of the board members being a previous superintendent, that would be General Davy. And General, as he was kind of following along with what's happening at the state level, has been trying to encourage the foundation to look and see if there would be different ways that they could support the district and possibly programs moving forward. So I had a conversation with General last week and where we really talked through some of the challenges that we're going to be facing in the fall and going forward and how the foundation may change the way they've historically provided support for both the school district or individuals in the district. So we took the topic to cabinet a week ago this past Monday to have a discussion about what would be some areas that we could identify to the foundation, almost creating a menu because we don't want to, I mean, it's still, it's the foundation, they have a board. We want to allow them to have some say. And so what I'm going to do tonight is share with you some of these ideas that we shared with the foundation and then ask the board if there would be any other ideas that you would have or if any of these ideas really resonate with you and say, yeah, we could support that. Now what we tried to do is we tried to give them kind of a, an expansive list. Some things are much more expensive than others, some might not be as much. Still taking into consideration kind of their priorities as a foundation. So I'm going to just walk you through a number of things that I shared with General that he's going to be taking back to the foundation. And then we'll just open it up for discussion amongst you as board members again, to ask any questions about these things or if you would have other ideas as well. And if you want to think about this more, this could be a topic that we could continue this conversation. So there were a number of areas that we provided. The first one was I shared with them this year that we ordered 200 hotspots at a cost of about $28 a unit, so minimal one-time costs with a reoccurring cost of $37 each for a total cost of $7,400 a month. So we said, maybe this is something the foundation could cover the costs moving forward. Another ask might be for supplying touch-based tablets or iPads for K through second grade levels where Chromebooks aren't necessarily the best option. The K2 level would see an immediate impact since many are currently using iPad 2 devices. That software such as the Lexia reading program will no longer function on after June 30. We didn't give them a cost on that. We just wanted to leave that broad and then maybe they could decide, yeah, that's, that's an initiative they'd like. So those were kind of two around the technology concept. The next one, as, as we start looking at some of the challenges we're going to have that we face in terms of future budget cuts, we tried to identify some things that could possibly be discussed that they may want to support as well. So the first one was the Improve Your Tomorrow, which hopefully you guys are aware of. It's the two mics that support it. We've seen them plenty of times. We're doing Improve Your Tomorrow at five high schools. The contract for those five high schools is $270,000. This is the mentoring program for young men of color. And I shared the link with General so he could get some more information. I talked about the amazing work that they do. But often when we have to go to a cut cycle, those outside groups that are supporting us, we, we will often reduce or cut. So that's one that had a bigger price tag on it at $270,000. But I think that's one they could really get behind and support. We shared with them, you know, they've historically supported camp winters around music, things like that. Our budget for instrument repair cleaning is budgeted at $22,000. But this has skyrocketed due to the guidelines in place for sanitizing instruments. So any additional funding would be helpful. This year we are anticipating $125,000 in costs for cleaning and repair costs. So again, you can kind of see the range we were providing for them. Our before and after-school VAPA programs cost the district $280,000 annually. The majority of this is around elementary schools, so we shared that with them. And then with the upcoming cuts in the budget, in the governor's budget to career technical education grants as well as education, adult education grants, by about 50%, staffing will be affected and pretty significantly. We spread a number, limited number of sections across the nine high schools and half would be in jeopardy of being cut. So we were, our request to them was if they could fund one FTE at a cost of $90,000 to $100,000, we could disperse those FTE over the course of schools that may see an impact on them. So those were the areas we shared with him. He's going to take that back to a smaller group. They're probably going to come and meet with me. But we wanted to have this discussion and get input from the board as well. So President Viasquez, at this time I'll take comments or questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kern, for that helpful background. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? I'll go ahead and go one by one just to accommodate our platform. Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. I just, I was writing down every item that you mentioned and I just have two that I came to my mind is middle school sports. I think we, we just initiated that program a couple of years ago. We saw the effectiveness and that could be an item that, you know, possibly could be cut. And I believe that it's costing us $75,000. Is that correct? I'm pretty sure that's right.
Yeah, the specifics of it, I could get those on you, but I think we're close to that. So that's something we could.
I mean, that's, that's a big save if we could do it. And if they wanted to, you know, another, you know, I'm just thinking extra curricular activity outside and, you know, high school sports could be something we look into. Referee cost, stipend to coaches, these are items that could be looked into. Those are my only two that I thought of besides the ones that you just mentioned.
Okay. And, and one of the things that I want to share with the board again, historically they've given small grants to individuals and they wanted to have a larger impact. So that's where this, and they, they actually think they can get the community more behind something larger that they, they see they're going for rather than sometimes these small grants are bits and pieces and it's harder to get those funded.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa. Ms. Costa, you're on mute.
Here we go.
There we go.
Any one of the items that was listed, I think the technology needs are going to be acute if we have to go back to distance learning. I know that the hotspots have made a real difference for our kids, so that's important. But any one of those listed will make a difference for our kids. So I'm, I really like this idea rather than doing the individual grants.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason?
Yeah, so I love that IYT is included, support that. Love that we're looking to address the digital divide, digital divide because that's been incredibly heavy on my mind. We as a district and as a state and as a nation has done incredible work to close the digital divide and we have to take it back. I mean, of course it's not completely closed, but we definitely have made a heck of a dent in it and we have to take it back. So I love that we're exploring how we could keep devices and technology in the hands of our kids. I like that we're talking about the CTE programming. You know, those programs are first get cut, they're highly expensive. That funding wasn't ever brought, made whole from the last recession. So I'm very fearful of the significant cuts coming to that. So I like that that's on the table. And I would ask that we prioritize pathways to high road jobs. If we're looking for that supplemental funding, that we're really putting those dollars into the programs that are leading to high road jobs. So that's the family supporting wages and benefits, dependable schedules. And also I'm wondering if we are at risk of cutting social, emotional, mental health services. I'm not sure exactly where we're at with that, but if we're looking at significant cuts there, maybe that should be on the list as well.
Yeah, so let me, let me speak to a couple of those things. First, I appreciate you bringing that pathways to highways. And Ms. Creason, you always say that, you've got that down about that. Would you mind sending me that in an email as well because I'll add that to the list? I'm actually meeting with the IYT team tomorrow, so I'll get a little more information going forward from them. And so, you know, and then with CTE as we, as you mentioned, we, we've just started to build that up more and more. And so to see it kind of potentially go backwards is a challenge. I will, I'll give you a precursor to probably two weeks from now. The conversations that I think have been had about the start of next school year, the number one issue that people are paying attention to as we start the school year is building relationships in the social, emotional needs of students. Because this year, when we had to close school, there were adults that already had relationships with, with folks. And to start the school year, one of the things, and some of you may have heard me say this already, I'm really concerned about the, the kindergartners who have never been to school on that first day of school and that's scary. But I'm also concerned about the eighth graders going to ninth grade. And I mean, my first day of high school, I went to Arcade and went to Bella Vista. I ate lunch with my sister for the first two weeks because I really didn't have anybody else to hang out with. It was scary. And so we have to find ways to support our students. All the social, emotional supports are on everybody's minds. Now I can't promise you those aren't cuts that we're going to bring forth, but that is an area that I think everybody is prioritizing and is a very, very high need, especially after what our students are just going through in this unprecedented time. We need to make sure we're supporting their social, emotional needs. So maybe what I'll do is, is just share with him, we don't have anything specific to that right now because I'm not sure where we would even start talking about cuts. But that's something that we want them to have on their radar as well.
That sounds great.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
Thank you. I, as, as I was listening to you, that I, I'm really pleased that Improve Your Tomorrow is on the list. And, and I was thinking about other kinds of after-school programs that benefit our students that are probably at risk. You know, things like mock trial, things like academic decathlon and other programs like that that are, are things that we might look at. One of the things that I've been doing a good deal of reading about in the last week or so is shields related to, as opposed to masks and so forth, particularly for those people who have asthma and things like that, that masks aren't going to, are not likely to be well-suited for. And in fact, teachers in various kinds of areas, particularly the visual and performing arts and other kinds of things. I think that, that I've looked at some that, you know, cost about $25 apiece, but they have real advantages related to they can be sterilized and things like that. And I think that's a place we may want to look. I was thinking about a couple of things that we've had to cut from our summer school that were so powerful over the last couple of years, like Kinder Camp and Math Camp and things like that, that might be a place where they want to go. I absolutely agree with Saul related to middle school sports. Another one I was thinking about was robotics. Robotics has been so powerful of bringing in particularly middle school kids and so forth. I'm afraid that, and it is expensive and I would be afraid we'll lose it in this, in this economic time. Those are the ones off the top of my head right now. Thanks.
I appreciate that, Dr. McKibben. And one of the things that I do want to say is that none of these things that we brought forward at this point in time are we saying we're going to cut because, you know, we're not. But if there's an opportunity for the foundation to get behind those, it, it helps us even as we move forward with the discussions. We're, we're going to have plenty of conversations in the next two years around making cuts. But it's, it's really is an opportunity for us to really strengthen that partnership with our foundation.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben, and thank you colleagues for your input. The item that comes to top of mind for me is just what I would kind of blanketly call food insecurity amongst our community members. I certainly know that we will be continuing to fulfill our obligations to keep our children fed. But as many know and for the benefit of the public, a lot of our nutritional services programs dollars are limited for a variety of reasons to just serving our students directly. And oftentimes what that means is that their parents and other community members are not included in that allocation and in those services. And certainly a lot, we've been getting a lot of information at the state level about the increased need both from just come, from our food bank programs but also across many of our state nutritional programs. And so I think that that's probably going to be a need that will increase and to the extent possible where we can partner to help make, ensure and meet the needs of our full community, including our students. I would love to open up for partnerships with that. And I mean, I think that being said, Superintendent Kern, do you have a comment?
No, I was, I don't want to cut you off there, Paul. I was going to say, I think what, what can be so powerful are ideas like this. I, I want to take all that you've shared and, and pass this along as well to General and the foundation. And then I think what they would really like to see, you know, they want to, they want to know what our desires are. We will get feedback that I think at some point, probably early next year, like August, we would come back with an item where, where the district, the board and the foundation may bring an item back again and saying, this is what we're going to support moving forward. Because they really feel like the one thing that we haven't done a great job and, you know, those of you that have been around a long time, we haven't really partnered with the foundation on initiatives like this. They've kind of been all those one-off things. And I, you know, Pam, you've, you've seen the foundation for many, many years and how they've operated. I think this is an opportunity for us to pivot and, and work more closely with them. And, and I appreciate the fact they want to hear from the district and the board because they feel that collective voice will allow them to go out to donors and other folks. because they feel that collective voice will allow them to go out to donors and other folks and get people to support our needs.
Thank you, Superintendent Kern. And I also appreciate the discussion, I think, both in terms of, for pretty much everything that's brought, been brought up, what everything that my colleagues have itemized and even including kind of the food insecurity piece. I am both hopeful and incredibly thankful, and I think we're going to have to increase our reliance on key partnerships like this. And I'm so thankful that they're already willing to kind of come to the table and say, hey, we want to partner. That being said, I, it's completely heartbreaking that this is what we're already kind of having conversations about. Especially, I mean, you know, the food piece, IYT masks. I'm not saying I don't appreciate any of those comments, because I do extraordinarily so. But what I would hope, and this is really is more a plea to kind of our, our state leaders, is the line that keeps going through my head is charity is not justice and we cannot balance these key, key programs for all of our students. We just, we can't let them go. And so I know that there's a lot of discussions happening, and particularly we had, you know, public comment from our Senator and Ken. I know that you're doing a lot of advocacy work, but the bottom line is like so many of these programs, we can't just hope and pray for beneficiaries, like we have to be able to sustain these. And I just, I, I hope that what we get kind of from the state both now and moving forward is something we can work with. And I know we'll make it work. And Ken, I really appreciate your comment saying like, none of these mean we're already slating them up in any way. Again, it's just room for extension and growth, but it's both, gives me hope, but breaks my heart a little bit. And I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, you know, I, the, the superintendent from San Diego Unified made a comment within the last two weeks, talking about, you know, distance learning was really tough this year, and it is tough, and, and we've learned a lot. But to go into distance learning as one of the possibilities in the fall, while we're doing all these budget cuts and, and what we're faced with, is going to make it even more challenging. And we cannot afford to have a generation of students who suffer and fall behind. We have to do everything we can, even in times of crisis, even in times of pandemic, even in times of budget cuts, to make sure that we're supporting our students. And that's not going to be easy, but I'm, I'm proud of the fact that we have partners inside the district that we work with, labor groups. We have partners outside the district. Many of you know those partners, who I think will want to come together and support us during these times more than ever as well. So thank you, President Viasquez.
Thank you for bringing it forward, and thank you all colleagues for the discussion of preview of many items to come. With that, we are at item J, Board Reports. Are there any board reports at this time? We will begin with Ms. Costa.
We were talking about distance learning and I had two phenomenal opportunities today. I was with Dewey teachers, Christine Teachout and Donna Corey. They're fifth grade teachers. They were meeting with their students. They would normally have met with them on Monday to do the week preview, but because of the holiday, they started today. First of all, Dinger came, and so that was quite exciting.
Oh.
But more importantly, they were going through the assignments that are due for the students. And it gave me a sense of some things just continue with good teachers no matter what, even with distance learning. The students are doing their state reports, which are just a rite of passage of fifth grade. And then Dewey is famous for their wax museum, and they are doing their wax museum virtually. And the kids were talking about it and talking about how they can make it interesting while it's online. And I thought, amazing teaching taking place. And then in the afternoon, I was back with Christine Teachout and special education teacher Rose Melavich. And Christine was teaching a lesson on novels and how to use evidence from the text and demonstrating using Google documents and a novel that the students are reading together with her. The special education teacher was there to provide support for one of the resource students in the class. So it made me really proud of what's happening with our San Juan teachers, and I just wanted to showcase that. And then the other thing, if you haven't seen it yet, we got an email earlier today. I want to tell the rest of the public this. The San Juan Teachers Virtual Band is on YouTube. Be sure you watch it. I sent them an email right away and said, on a board meeting day, this was the best gift in the world. It was so calming and so positive, and just another yay for San Juan. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Dr. McKibben, you also had your hand raised. Dr. McKibben, you're on mute.
Yes, yeah.
There we go.
I was punching the wrong button. I was punching my name and the mute, mute button up there. I wanted to say, comment on a couple of things. I was on a Zoom call that was put together by the Carmichael Chamber of Commerce with Congressman Farah. And I, and we were talking about a lot of things, some of which related to education. And I wanted to report how complimentary he was to our school district and our leadership, and particularly Mr. Kern and so forth. And, and the, the notion is that we think sometimes that nobody's watching. Well, a lot of people are watching, and I want to, and I want to say something about that. Speaking of watching, I was on, thanks to Ms. Costa, a Kingswood eighth grade math course, I believe, last week. And Markan and his 12 students that were on the Zoom visit were studying the Pythagorean theorem, which took shutters up my back as I saw that and so forth, and watched how these kids, who probably, in many cases, their, their strength was not mathematics, but how hard they were working on, on that sort of thing, and how he was, he was trying to make it as interesting as possible and, and was moving back and forth and using examples and so forth. And it is, and as he said to me afterwards, my wife tells me that I'm not nearly as funny as I think I am. Well, I say I get the same thing from my wife too, and so forth. But trying to make it interesting and so forth, and that, and if you can make the Pythagorean theorem interesting, that's, that's, that's difficult in any space. But I wanted to thank Pam and the folks at Kingswood for letting me sit in and watch this happen.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Do any of my other colleagues have board reports, Mr. Hernandez or Ms. Creason? Mr. Hernandez?
Real quickly, I wasn't able to be part of a virtual classroom as well, and I'm sure you all remember that. Are you smarter than a fifth grader? I clearly am not as smart as these fifth graders, and it was great to see, great time.
Thank you, Mr. Hernan, or Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
I already gave, I already gave.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Creason. I got my C's mixed up on the computer.
The C's names, that was totally, okay. Just wanted to do a shout out to all the creative ideas that are coming from our families and students to celebrate seniors. It's been really great to drive around town and see great signs. I know El Camino parents have set up and adopt a senior program where you can adopt a senior and decorate their door and give them some gifts. So, you know, just want to shout out, you know, it's not ideal, but really inspired by the creativity from our families and students to make the best out of it. And really appreciate the community coming together to celebrate our graduate, graduates.
Thanks, Ms. Creason. I also was inspired by Ms. Costa's last board report and got in on the virtual class activity fun. I got to join Ms. Luna's class at Whitney Elementary, and there was a quiz and I did pass it. So that was very exciting, particularly since it included math, which I was very nervous about. But it was really a wonderful experience. Really glad to watch our teachers go above and beyond to truly create a community environment during these circumstances. Gave a little bit of extra support to some that are, had been observing Ramadan. And I go, that's got to be hard to begin with, but I know here at home, it's hard for me to stay out of the fridge. So I can't imagine being home and kind of watching, watching that commitment. But it was just really overall, a really great experience. And I want to thank Ms. Luna for letting me join her. Additionally, I wanted to echo Ms. Creason's comments about seniors and let my colleagues know that I'm aware of San Juan High School's doing an adopt a senior program as well. They're looking for both the school community and community members there. I've been able to, I was able to adopt a senior, I'm very proud of. It's been nice and thankful that they're letting us kind of get in on, on the action. Again, not anybody's ideal or expected situation, but lovely to see everybody trying to, to make the best of it. With that, we are at item K, Future Agenda Items. Do any board members wish to add any items to the future agenda? Seeing universal head nods, no. We are at item L, Visitor Comments. Mr. Allen, are there any visitor comments?
We do have one additional visitor comment that has been submitted. And then I also have Mr. Simmons' comments that he has sent over for me to read, if that would be the pleasure of the board.
Yes, please.
I will start with our visitor comment, which is Valeria Hernandez. I write today in support of your decision to delay the process of moving from at-large district to by-district elections until a time when people can safely convene and the most recent census data is available. Moving to by-district elections is a process that I fully support and believe that it should be done thoughtfully and with full community input. Given that we are in the middle of a public health emergency and census count, I believe we should wait to draw district boundaries until we, until we have the most recent census data. By-district elections are an investment in the district, and fiscally, it does not make sense to rush to draw boundaries based on outdated demographic information from a decade ago, especially when it would lead to districts that are not equal or relatively fair.
Mr. Allen, before you read Mr. Simmons' comments, I just want to offer one last opportunity for those on the line to participate at this time. Can you please just run through one more time how to indicate a desire to offer public comment for folks on the line?
I would be happy to. If you have joined us today on the Zoom call and would like to offer a public comment, you can do so by raising your hand. You can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen if you're on a mobile device. Or if you are on a desktop device, that raise hand button is located on the bottom of your participants list. If you are calling into the meeting today, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad. And seeing no hands go up, I will move forward to Mr. Simmons' comments. Members of the board and Superintendent Kern, I am Bill Simmons, President of the San Juan Teachers Association. I want to thank you and the district staff for continuing to work with all of the practitioners of SJTA as we navigate distance learning to benefit our students during the statewide shelter-in-place this spring. As we move into the summer and look toward the fall, I want you to know that the San Juan Teachers Association is supportive of the district moving to trusty areas for the school board. I believe that you wisely postponed any changes during shelter-in-place so that all members of the community can participate in the creation of the trusty areas. However, I do want to recommend that you do not change the number of board seats from five to seven. Prophecies of this increase use the rationale that because many districts that are smaller than SJUSD have seven board members. At a previous meeting, one comment was made that San Diego Unified and Long Beach Unified are the only districts larger than San Juan that only have five board members. SJTA thinks you should be proud to be in the same group as San Diego and Long Beach, as well as San Jose Unified and Palo Alto Unified, which also have five board members. These are highly functional school boards with great community support to represent their communities well. You are a very diverse school board and have all shown that you represent all your constituents well. On the other hand, we have seen the dysfunction of school boards in our very own county that have seven members. As you move ahead in the process for trusty areas, please know that five, that, please know that most five-member boards in California are as highly functional as you currently are, so there's no need to add board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Seeing no further visitor comments, we are returning to closed session to discuss one personnel matter pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Superintendent's Evaluation. Colleagues, please find the session for, the link for the closed session to resume in your email inbox. And at this time, that is the end of our open general meeting.
Thank you, President Viasquez. Thank you to all of our attendees. Our next scheduled board meeting is June 9th at 6:30 PM for the open session. At this time, it is likely to again be held online via the Zoom platform. So we would invite you to visit our website at www.sanjuan.edu/june9 for more information about how to access that meeting as we get closer. Thank you again for joining us tonight.
Welcome back, President Viasquez. We are recording, and the floor is yours. Oh, one moment.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have adjourned closed session, so now I am adjourning the full meeting. We are adjourned.